All right, we're going to go ahead and get the city commission meeting called to order. Could you please stand and join me if you're able in the pledge of allegiance? All right, well, good evening, everyone. I want to take just a small point of privilege, I guess, to say congratulations to the Yankton Bucks. I know when folks win state titles, we have them come to the city commission meeting and we read a proclamation. And I was really thinking, excuse me, I was really thinking that we were going to be able to do that again. But I know all of you know the outcome of the game because I don't think there was a Yankton person missing in that section. It was a sea of red on Friday night. So kudos to our community for getting over to Vermillion Friday night and supporting the Yankton Bucks. It's been a great season. They've been a lot of fun to watch. And just want to give a shout out to the coaches and the players, the cheerleaders, and everybody that works to do athletics at Yankton High School, but in particular, the football team. And congratulations on their trip to the Dome and being in the championship. So wanted to give a shout out there before we get started. Roll call.
Benson.
Brunick.
Here.
Hanoff. Johnson.
Present.
Minor.
Here.
Schram.
Here.
Villanueva.
Present.
Weber.
Here.
Mayor Mosher.
Here.
City Manager Leon.
Here.
City Attorney Denharter.
Here.
Our next under routine business is to approve the minutes of the work session meeting of October 23, 2023, and the regular meeting of October 23, 2023. What is your pleasure?
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on either meeting? All right, all those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. And anybody abstaining? All right, minutes passed. Number three under routine business is schedule of bills. What is your pleasure?
I move that we pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on the bills? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schram.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Benson. Mayor Mosher.
Aye. Motion carries. Number four under routine business is the city manager's report. So I want to turn it over to City Manager Leon at this time.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission and the public. Our mission is to provide exemplary experiences, services, and spaces that create opportunities for everyone to learn, engage, and thrive. A few reminders for you commissioners and for the public. First of all, I passed out to you commissioners some spanning the century Meridian Bridge Centennial stickers. So we have a lot of those. So if you need some more, let me know. And please put them on your water bottles or wherever people put stickers nowadays and let people know that we're getting ready to celebrate. And if the public's interested in having some of those, we can give access to get people stickers to start promoting all the events coming forward, beginning, I believe, already in January, which is not that far away. I would ask you all to please RSVP to the city holiday party. Later on in your consent calendar, we talk about a possible quorum for December 1st, which is the city Christmas party. We have some fun entertainment planned and great food again this year. Be at the Meridian venue. So if you can make it, please let HR know as soon as possible. Finances informed me that our packaged on sale liquor bid has come and gone. We did not receive any bids for the on sale packaged liquor. That's okay. What I plan to do is put that on the agenda on the 27th, and you all can talk about what you want to do. If you want to put that back out, or if you want to hold on to it for a while, or how you want to proceed. So we'll put that back on the agenda on November 22. I also, as you know, we moved the video lottery back a meeting just because we're looking for some more information from the state. We want to make sure we have thorough information for you all. So that got moved back a meeting, but that's still ongoing. Please check your schedule for the public's benefit Thanksgiving week. Is that, that's next week already? Oh, my goodness. So if you have a Wednesday pickup day or Thursday pickup day, your day will be Wednesday, the 22nd. So Wednesday, Thursday routes, 22nd. Friday, your route will be on Friday, the 24th. So we'll get that up on social media, but just be mindful because if folks have company, they'll probably have, need to have their garbage in those days are a little bit different than what we normally have for holidays. So please check that. Hope to have a West Side Park update from our third party consultant on the pond at our next meeting. So hopefully, we can get some information to the public and to you all on the 27th on that. On the 27th, at 6:00, we also have a work session relating to our animal ordinance. The staff is working on putting information together for that. Want to talk to you about sales tax. Gina's put that in your SharePoint for you or has emailed it to you. For the month of October, all three pennies, we were up. We had a really strong month, 15%. Makes us up for the year 5.8%. So I think we're seeing some of the reporting that maybe didn't get included the previous month, but very strong. First and second penny up 16% for the cumulative year, up 5.7%. And then the triple B up 5.4% cumulative for the year, up 7.9%. So those are the kind of numbers we like to see, especially coming into the winter months, and we hope those continue. I do not believe, Mayor, that I have anything else for you unless you have questions for me.
Is there anybody on the commission that has questions for the city manager? I would kind of piggyback on the spanning the century and the Meridian Bridge. Hope the commission and others saw the stunning pictures that were selected for the calendar. I don't know how you would weed those down. I've seen over the years so many great pictures of the Meridian Bridge. But kudos to the committee and the folks that did that. And get your calendar purchased. Those will make a great gift with all of the wonderful pictures that are in that. So you made me think of that when we were talking about the stickers. So that would be one thing to add there. Anybody else? I think I looked up and down. All right. Then we will move on to public appearances. Now is the time and the place for anybody in the public that wishes to appear in front of the city commission on something not on the agenda tonight. All right. Seeing no movement, then, we will move on to the consent agenda. Number one is setting the date of November 27, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. here in the commission chambers for our next work session. And as City Manager Leon shared, we'll be discussing our animal ordinance. Number two is a possible quorum event on December 1, 2023, as tied to the Yankton City Christmas Party mentioned in her report. No official commission action will take place at the time, but do want to alert you, there could be a quorum. Number three is to establish November 27, 2023 is the date for the public hearing for a special events malt beverage on sale retailer's license and a special on sale wine retailer's license for one day, December 23, 2023, from the center. Chris Thury, Executive Director, located at 900 Whiting Drive. Number four is to establish November 27, 2023 is the date for a public hearing for the transfer of location of a retail on off sale wine and cider license for January 1, 2023 to December 31, 2023, from Morgan LLC, doing business as South Point Gaming Lounge, Kirby Mullenberg owner, located at 1101 Broadway Avenue Suite 109, to Morgan LLC, doing business as South Point Gaming Lounge, Kirby Mullenberg owner, and then the next address is 1101 Broadway Avenue Suite 109A. Number five is to establish November 27, 2023 is the date for the public hearing for a new retail on off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license for one, for July 1, 2023, to June 30, 2024, from Sixth Meridian LLC, doing business as Farmhouse Food Company, Ryan Heine member, that is located at 2503 Fox Run Parkway Suite 1. And number six is to establish November 27, 2023, is the date for a public hearing for a new retail on off sale wine insider license for January 1, 2024 to December 31, 2024, from Sixth Meridian LLC, doing business as Farmhouse Food Company, Ryan Heine member, located again at 2503 Fox Run Parkway Suite 1. What is the pleasure?
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. And anybody abstaining? All right, moving on to old business. Number one is consideration of memorandum 23-214 regarding the request for a special events on sale malt beverage retailer's license and a special events on sale wine retailer's license for one day, December 9, 2023, from the center, Chris Thury, Executive Director, located at 900 Whiting Drive. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Johnson.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schram.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Mayor Mosher.
Aye. Motion carries. Number two under old business is consideration of memorandum 23-215 regarding the request for a transfer of location of a retail on off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license for July 1, 2023, to June 30, 2024, from Finney's LLC, doing business as Finney's Pub and Casino, James Palmer owner, 2101 Broadway Avenue Suite 40, to Sri LLC, doing business as Vape God, DePan Patel owner, located at 821 Broadway Avenue Suite B. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Minor.
Aye.
Schram.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Mosher.
Aye. Motion carries. Number three under old business is consideration of memorandum 23-216 regarding the request for a transfer of location of a retail on off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license for July 1, 2023, to June 30, 2024, from Finney's Casino LLC, doing business as Finney's Casino, James Palmer owner, at 2101 Broadway Avenue Suite 50, to Finney's Casino LLC, doing business as Pinups Casino and Gaming Lounge, number six, James Palmer owner, located at 3010 Broadway Avenue. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Schram.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mayor Mosher.
Aye. Motion carries. Number four under old business is consideration of memorandum 23-217 regarding the applications for renewal of an alcoholic beverage license for 2024, which would be the dates of January 1, 2024 to December 31, 2024 licensing period. What is your pleasure? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schram.
Aye.
Mayor Mosher.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to doom business. Number one under new business is consideration of memorandum 23-218 recommending the acceptance of proposal number two from Dr. Julia Helwig. Is that right? Yes, all right. With the Government Research Bureau at the University of South Dakota. Before I ask for the pleasure of the commission, I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Leon to get us started. And then I'm assuming Dana will be up to the podium quickly, along with Dr. Helwig. So Amy.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission and the public. As you all are aware, through the budgeting season, the Library Foundation reached out to us and asked if the commission would be interested in partnering with them on a feasibility study. A feasibility study to determine where we're going to go here with the future of our library. Will we require an expansion? Will we require a new facility? And what would the community support if those are answered in the affirmative, either of those? And so in working with the foundation and talking with the library board and friends of the library, Dana Schmidt and I have discussed probably the best first step would be to find an entity that is able to do that. And there's a lot of consultants that you can, you can find. I mean, you can find a consultant to tell you almost anything, and they'll charge you almost anything, too. We happen to not have to look very far. The University of South Dakota has a branch of, its political science department that will do this type of research with the help of students. So they can do it a bit more economically, we think, than other firms. And we did not do a request for proposals. It's professional services, so it doesn't need to be done. However, we did ask the Research Bureau to provide us with some scenarios, sort of, you know, different scales of the study. So Dr. Helwig and Dana can talk about that if you're interested. But, you know, we found that their proposal was very thorough and would provide us with the information that we need from the community to know what direction to steer next steps, both from the library board, foundation, and friends, and for us as a community and you as a commission. So we did not look further at this time. Confidence in what the University of South Dakota can provide us with, as well as knowing that they are so close to us, they're right there. So we feel that we'll have a really good opportunity for communication throughout the process. So with that, the staff is recommending approval of this. There is a cost associated with the study, of course, and the selected option for the University of South Dakota Government Research Bureau to conduct this. So with that, I'll let Dana give you the details, and Dr. Helwig as well can talk about the process. There's also a timeline there, if that's of interest to you within that proposal. I don't think it's on, Dana. There's a...
It looks like the light's on.
Is the light on? Okay, yeah, it is. Okay.
Okay, is that better?
There you go.
Off with the bang, starting off with a bang. Thank you, Amy. You summed up it, you summed it up very well. And I'm going to hand it over to Julia very soon so that she can tell you a little bit more about what they do. But the foundation is really excited to get this feasibility study started. We really want to get community feedback to see what the community is looking for as far as a state of the art library and what we can provide to the community. So we want to hear, we want to hear what people are interested in and also what they would be willing to support. And I have great trust in Dr. Helwig that she will provide a very comprehensive study for us. So I will invite her up to tell us a little bit about herself. And then if you guys have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer that.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. So yes, I'm Dr. Julia Helwig, and I am the Director of the Government Research Bureau. I'm also Associate Professor of Political Science at the Department at University of South Dakota. And I'm really excited to be here because this is exactly the kind of work that we've been hoping to do. The GRB has done a lot of state level projects, but I'm excited to do something for our neighbors. This is exactly what the GRB was made for, is doing public service while mentoring and teaching our students and while conducting research. My background is in elite surveys and public opinion surveys in American politics. I have conducted similar kinds of work across the state of South Dakota. I have conducted several different applied government research projects, as well as my own research agenda. So I'm very excited to do this feasibility study. Some of the things that we'll be looking at are materials usage, service awareness and usage, programming awareness and attendance, satisfaction of services, space programming, improvement areas and needs, perception of needs, and likelihood of support of an expansion, and demographic questions. We propose to do a multi-methods project. So we will be doing quantitative survey as well as focus groups. We will also be working with library staff to examine the information that they already have collected. I know they provide you a library report each year, and so we'll be working alongside with them on that side as well. Option number two is a comprehensive study. It allows us to send out hard copy surveys and postcards to direct people to an online survey across the city. By doing the most comprehensive reach, the closest kind of reach that we can get, the more likely people are to respond to the survey. And that's what we want, is we want to get as many people as possible to respond with a random sample of participants. We'll also be doing focus groups, as I mentioned. This gives us an opportunity to talk a little bit more in depth with folks, particularly those who have particular interests. For example, families, parents, maybe underserved communities, and so on. And so we're really well-prepared, very excited to do this project. We'll be working with myself alongside three undergraduate students who'll be working with me. Most of the expenses come from salaries and from materials to send out the paper versions. So I'm here to answer any questions that you have. I'm a city councilor myself at the City of Vermillion, and so it's very exciting to be on the opposite side. And it took everything I had not to say aye as you all were speaking. So, you know, I know the position that you're in. I'm here to answer any questions.
Curious, when you talk about, I love the cross-reference of being able to do more surveys and proposal, too. When you talk about it being random, how do you select that? Is it a cross-reference of folks that are members of the library? I saw in here, like, parents or children? Like, how random is it? And how do you identify who will get those surveys?
Very good question. So we can work with, for example, utility billing or something like that, that gives us a list, and then we can draw random samples from that. That gives us the most comprehensive view. We don't only want to survey library patrons. We don't only want to survey families. In some of the studies that I looked in preparing for this, I found some that only spoke with library patrons, and they give a very skewed view. And so I want to make sure that we are speaking to a random sample of everyone. That said, it's also very good to have particular communities that you're speaking with, and the focus groups will really help us with that in particular. We will also be asking, of course, just sort of what segment of the community that they're coming from in those demographic questions. But in terms of the random sample, we can do that through utility billing primarily.
Okay, so you would be looking at just residents of the city of Yankton, even though, like, folks in the community have memberships or can get memberships to the library, just be in the city limits?
Yeah, because we want to make sure that we're speaking, again, we're speaking to everyone and not just those who have a library card. Because, you know, they're not just the library patrons who are taxpayers, right? So we want to speak to everyone. And especially, actually, we want to speak to people who are not necessarily using the library, because we want to know, why are you not using the library? And what can we do to make sure that you have that opportunity?
And I would assume that also cross-references different sections of the community addresses randomly across, you know, southeast, northeast, northwest, that is randomized as well?
Absolutely. Yeah, certainly.
Other questions from the commission?
So is there any point in this foundational work that will be actually maybe educating people a little bit on what the possibilities of a library are? Because I know there's a lot of people who still think of libraries as a place where you get physical books. And we all know that there's a lot that happens in libraries beyond that. And there's a lot of great examples across the country and the world. And I didn't know if that has a role to play in this early stage or not, so.
That's a really great question. You have to be really careful because you don't want to give so much information that you're swaying people's mind. But at the same time, a lot of the questions that you ask, for example, which services have you used? And then by offering a list of the kinds of services that the library provides, people can select them. And at the same time, if they weren't aware of some of those, they're then being educated. But, you know, part of my job and my skill set is to know how to write survey questions. And so I take that very seriously to make sure that I'm not skewing or biasing people's viewpoint by saying something like, you know, do you think we ought to do this way, right? But rather have, offering several questions on the same topic, particularly when it comes to questions like, should we expand? Where should that funding come from? And so I want to make sure I'm being really careful with those. Yes, thank you.
Just a quick question. It looks like the bulk of the extensive hard copy survey that we're doing, postcards as well as those individual surveys going out, do you have to, as a citizen, do you have to be invited? Do you have to receive one of these surveys? The postcards are going to tell us that it's online. Everybody can participate in the survey, right? Whether or not they get the postcard?
Yes, absolutely. So we can, we will supplement with what we call a snowball technique, which is, oh, did you hear about the library survey? Oh, you should take that, right? And so having the random sample is what ensures that we get as many as possible. Adding the snowball technique makes sure that we get sort of everyone. It means that the survey will be available and visible on the library website, for example, or when people come into the library. And so by just doing a snowball sample, you're not getting everyone. And by just doing the random sample, then you might not get everyone either. And so by supplementing those, especially because our main goal is to get as many people as possible. And so, yes, we will be supplementing with a snow, what we call a snowball technique as well.
So it's all working hand in hand?
Absolutely.
Got it. Thank you. So Commissioner Minor, you can fill it out, whether you get a postcard or not, is the moral of the story. I don't want anyone to feel left out. No, especially not, especially not a retired English teacher, right?
I will also add that we will be offering the survey in Spanish as well. I'm a Spanish speaker, and I also have a Spanish-speaking student who has done translation work in the past. So she and I will work together to ensure that there's an option in Spanish.
Awesome. Thank you for that. That's great. Could you, I don't know if it's you or Dana, kind of walk us through a little bit of the timeline as far as kind of what's all going to come about? How does it get started? And I know there's one in the packet here, but just kind of curious how this all flows.
Sure. We'll be working in the spring is the plan. We'll be starting at the latest in January to do some of that preparatory work. The main things that we want to make sure that we're doing early on is having our team meet with the various library boards. We have the three different boards that are involved, as well as anyone else who is an important stakeholder in this, and ensuring that we get all the questions that everyone wants, while also maintaining the efficiency and integrity so that we're not overwhelming the public. I know very often, library boards want to have all of the questions. And so we want to make sure that it's accessible there. So that'll be the prep work that we'll be doing in January. Hope to finalize that instrument in February so that we can vet those and deploy the survey there in about March, April or so, as well as those supplementally, supplemental hard copies. The more that we can do with the postcards, the better, rather than sending out the hard copies, because they also take longer to receive back. And in about April, May or so, we hope to plan those focus groups. We'll likely host those at the library, invite people to come there in late spring, early summer. And then we'll conduct the data analysis, as well as collating that information from the focus groups. That takes some time to create those transcripts and analyze those transcripts. And so we plan to have everything said and done by the end of the summer, in about August or so, at the latest.
Can I see in your timeline, your presentation to YCL, is there going to be anything presented to the commission, or will Or will it come, Dana, from you?
If you'd like me to.
Or how, how does this, I didn't see that kind of next step. I just see it going to the library, but.
I can certainly, I have no problem coming back here again and reporting to you. But, you know, my initial plan was to bring it to the, to the library boards. But I'd imagine that they want to present it to you afterwards, and so I'd be happy to be a part of that as well.
Other questions for Dana or Dr. Helwig?
Yeah.
Yeah. This actually might be a question for Ann from the Foundation. So, I see if $20,000 is given this evening, then $16,345 will be the leftover, the remaining funds. So, could you tell us a little bit about what you're doing right now? Is there a fundraiser going on right now? And just if people want to help, where can they go to do that?
Thank you for your question, Mike. Yes, we are doing a very limited fundraiser right at the moment. Kind of a, we identified individuals that we know well or that we think would be strong supporters of the library, and we just sent out a fundraising letter to a group of about 180 people. We feel confident that we will have no problem raising the funds, and we would like to exceed any funding for moving on with any continued project on the library, because we know this is very much just the very first step in a very long process, as you're probably aware of. So, yes, we are actively fundraising right now. But it's a more, like I said, more defined group. But we would eventually, if everything gets the go-ahead and we get positive feedback, we would enlist a capital campaign project, very much like Dive in Yankton did, to proceed and hopefully fund the total project, or a good portion of it. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thanks, Ann.
You're welcome. Anyone else have a question for me while I'm up? Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a comment. I'm your representative on the library board, and I would just like to say Mary Pat was the one that brought up Dr. Helwig, and I appreciate, I appreciate that the board is made up of a lot of different people with diverse backgrounds, and you're, you're doing us a great service by suggesting Dr. Helwig, and I'm really excited about what we're going to do. We had a big meeting, I don't know, was that two weeks ago, with all of the three boards? And it was really fun to see the room full of people who are excited and passionate about getting us a new library. I remember the ribbon-cutting at the current library. I think I was about six or seven. And so, I can't wait to see what we're going to have next.
Thanks for that. Anybody else on the Commission have questions? If not, what is the pleasure of the Commission? Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move forward with the acceptance of proposal two and commit $20,000 to this project. Any other Commission discussion now that we actually have a motion?
We've been discussing the possibility of getting closer to a library project for a long time, so this is an exciting step. Thank you to everyone in the audience who's working on the vision and figuring out what the community wants, because, of course, that will be key.
Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Weber.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Shrom.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Mayor Mosher.
Aye. Motion carries. And my thanks to Dana, Dr. Helwig, Mary Pat, and you guys, and all the work and that you guys have done in the respective boards. As Commissioner Johnson said, this is an exciting time. I do think it's time that we see what is next for our libraries and the use of those. So, thank you for all your work and your continued work, because I know this is only a small step for the path that we'll be on to get this figured out. So, my thanks to you on that.
All right. Number two under new business is consideration of memorandum 23-219 regarding resolution 23-66, an owner petition annexation request of law addition, which is, contains 28.06 acres and is the future Garden Estates addition. And that was shared previously under owner petition, Bob Law, Inc., owner. What is your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any Commission discussion on this? Anybody in the public? Please state your name.
Nancy Nguyen Andy, CEO, Yankton Thrive, 803 East Fourth Street. I just want to say, this is one of many steps that Yankton Thrive is going through for our garden estates development. So, annexation, we are very proud to hopefully be welcomed into the city as a new neighborhood for you. And there are many other things we'll be coming forward to the Commission to consider approval of, one of those being a tax increment district. We are anticipating that'll be probably in December or January that we will come forward with that. But we appreciate your consideration of the annexation for 90 single-family home lots in Garden Estates.
Nancy, are you open to break ground in the spring?
Well, we have some other steps we need to get through first. We would love to have already been moving dirt. We are working on some drainage engineering that we need to get finalized. So, you know, if Mother Nature provides us a continued warm winter season, we'll be able to get some more work done. But as far as putting the streets and everything in, what we will do is we will have the availability for developers to come and purchase lots from us early so they can select the areas where they want to build their homes, because it's going to be such a vast neighborhood. So, we'll just continue to communicate with the Commission and the public on the process.
Nancy, will this be, will the utility situation be similar to the Westbrook Estates' current developments, where it's, the BY surcharge will be on top of the water bill?
Yes. This is part of BY Water's territory, and as we discussed with them through the grant application process for the Housing Infrastructure Financing Program, they have agreed to allow the city and BY to utilize that program for this neighborhood.
Any other questions from the Commission for Nancy or others? All right. We do have a motion and a second. Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Shrom.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Mayor Mosher.
Aye. Motion carries. My thanks to Yankton Thrive. I feel like that's all I'm doing tonight is saying thank you and kudos, but that's kind of fun to have in your community, T-Yankton Thrive, to continue to work on our housing development here in town. Number three under new business is consideration of memorandum 23-223 recommending the approval of a purchase of a new 2025 international LT day cab in the amount of $148,755 for the Department of Public Works Joint Powers Division from North Central International of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, based on a source well contract. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any Commission discussion on this?
Do we know what the lead time on this one will be? Has it gotten any better than the last one?
It may have gotten better. It has gotten more expensive, but it may be a little better than now. Some supply, it depends upon what we're buying, some supply chains have loosened up, and some are still, we're still waiting, so.
Great question. Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Johnson.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Shrom.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Mayor Mosher.
Aye. Motion carries. Number four is consideration memorandum 23-224 recommending the approval of resolution 23-67, increasing the capitalization threshold for fixed asset reporting purposes from 500 to 5,000 effective January 1st, 2024. Lisa, you did such a great job on the media review on Friday explaining exactly what is being requested here. Maybe you could just share a little bit of that with the Commission and the public tonight.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Mosher. This is for basically internal cleanup on our end. Right now, if we buy anything as simple as a desk for $800, we have to enter, add it to a depreciation schedule, and capitalize it. So, talking with our auditors, talked with Rod Fortin at the Department of Legislative Audit as well, the standard norm is 5,000. So, that's something, we're just trying to increase that, make it a little bit easier on our books, and try to get more in today's dollars, should I say.
Thank you for that. She had me at the desk example on Friday, so.
Any, any other questions? If not, what is the pleasure of the Commission?
So moved.
Second. All right. We have a motion and a second. And now, having a motion and a second, is there any other Commission questions? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Minor.
Aye.
Shrom.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Mosher.
Aye. Motion carries. Number five under new business is consideration of memorandum 23-220 recommending approval of a lease agreement between the city and the center formerly known as the Yankton Area Senior Citizens Center Incorporated. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
We do have a motion and a second. Is there any Commission discussion on the renewal of this lease? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Shrom.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mayor Mosher.
Aye. Motion carries. And number six under new business is consideration of memorandum 23-205 recommending the city commission provide direction on what additional holidays, if any, the city manager should administratively establish for full-time employees in 2024 and 2025. It is further recommended that the city commission request that the three federal holidays that are currently not part of the bargaining agreement be considered when contract negotiations next occur. We did have a request by a Commissioner to table this agenda item, I used the wrong word, Ross, postpone this agenda item to a future meeting. And so, with that, I would ask if there is any interest from the Commission to do that before we proceed.
I have an interest of postponing it, beans that Commissioner Hunoff, this was the thing that he had brought up. I have not heard from anyone else on this, but was willing to have the conversation and would like to have the conversation. I know at the meeting, when he brought it up under other business at the, at the end of the meeting, he had asked to have it at the next agenda meeting or on the agenda of the next meeting. And I remember the statement that I had had was that I was interested in having the conversation. But I thought that it, we needed a little bit more time than that on the next agenda. And so, I feel like if we waited then, we could maybe wait another, another, for it to be on the next agenda, just to have the conversation and give it its due diligence.
So, Commissioner Brunick, are you making a motion to postpone it? And if so, to when?
Yes.
It needs a formal motion.
Okay. I'm making a motion to have it at the next agenda, on the next meeting, on the agenda.
Second. All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by the Commission? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Weber.
No.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
No.
Minor.
Aye.
Shrom.
No.
Mayor Mosher.
With that, then, the motion to table it has failed, which means we will be discussing it tonight. I will turn it over to City Manager Leon to walk us through what's in the Commission packet.
Okay. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the Commission. So, we talked about getting you some more information about the holidays, and so we have that provided for you in our packet. Our holidays are part of the negotiated benefits that are part of our AFSMI labor union, as well as our FOP labor union collective bargaining agreements. Those bargaining agreements go through December 31st, 2025. So, those holidays for 2024, 2025 have already been negotiated, which is why the recommendation in your packet is, should the Commission want to give more holidays to direct staff, me, to administratively provide holidays, because I can do that administratively for 2024, 2025. And then, upon opening the union agreements for reconsideration or renegotiation for 2026 and beyond, consider then negotiating the full holiday schedule. We were also asked to provide you with some information of what we have now. So, you can see that list of actual holidays. We include the Friday after Thanksgiving as well as Christmas Eve. And we also have some personal days. So, we have three eight-hour days that can be used at any time during the year pending approval from the Department head. A fourth personal holiday, when that Christmas Eve does fall on a Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, so that we can accommodate schedules. So, I also have included the cost of a holiday. So, when we do have holidays, we do, they are paid, so you see what, we pay our staff. But there are some folks who have to work. We have to have dispatchers. We have to have police officers. They receive holiday overtime. Sometimes, we have to have folks at our water plant. This does not include snow removal, which could happen in the winter holidays. But you just get an average idea there of how much a holiday costs in addition to regular staff time. I also included, and Human Resources did the work on this, so they provided to me sort of a matrix of what holidays are currently observed in different cities. Apart from Sturgis, Sturgis, I think, has one more than we do. We are right at the top there when you combine the personal days that we have. So, you can see we're at 13. That's about the maximum. So, 13 days, total holidays, including personal days. And we were asked as well to give a little bit of information on what the banks provide as just by means an example for everyone's interest. You know, banks have a different business model, of course, than we do. So, but you can see there, they're averaging about 11 or 11 and 1/2. There's one that has a little bit more. So, again, you know, I'm objective as I can be, although I benefit from this decision as well, so I just want everyone to keep that in mind. But I think in visiting with Ross, we know that holidays are part of the bargaining unit. So, we're obliged to let those bargaining units, the stewards and their staff representatives discuss those with us. And that's why that recommendation comes to you in terms of the future. But if you'd like to give one, two, or three more of those holidays, and we're talking about Indigenous Peoples' Day, Martin Luther King Day, and Juneteenth, that's something you can direct me to do, and I would do that administratively for those two years, and then we'd go back and negotiate the full holiday schedule at the time. In the past, I think I mentioned this before when it was brought up, but in the past, we have talked with employees about holidays. For example, when I first came here, Presidents' Day was not a day that was observed as a holiday. In a year where we were not able to do as much as we would have liked with wages, we asked bargaining units, you know, is there a holiday that you would like to add to your schedule? And they chose Presidents' Day. That happened again. Now, that was before the onset of the newest holiday, Juneteenth. But at that time, they chose a personal day, wanting to choose their own birthday or their, add it to a vacation, et cetera. So, as the Commission pleases, that's how we'll follow through in '24 and '25. And then again, it's my recommendation that we sit down and negotiate with the employee unions when we get to that point, when negotiations- unions when we get to that point, when negotiations open back up. Brittany Orr, our Human Resources Director, is here, and she put together a lot of the detail, so she can tell you more about what happens schedule-wise with our people that are working. And if we need to, we can dive into what happens if it's a holiday and we've removed snow, which has happened a couple times, because that's, you know, it happens. Questions for me?
So, Amy, I understood you correctly that in the past, we've offered, it could be Martin Luther King Day, it could be Indigenous Peoples' Day when we're negotiating, but the bargaining unit decided they preferred the floating personal holiday versus taking those?
Yes, the first time we asked, you know, would you like an additional holiday? Because we were in a tight, we felt tight budget year for wages, and we laid out all the holidays in the schedule, and they selected the President's Day Monday. So that currently stands. And then the second time that occurred, we asked them, we offered the current holidays that we did not observe. At that time, Juneteenth was not a holiday recognized by the federal government, so that was not part of the discussion. But they said, could we have a personal day, meaning choose the day ourselves? The next time we talked about those things, I believe, I'm remembering this correctly, so those of you who are on, if not, the next time, they wanted to do Christmas Eve, mostly, I think, because the church services tend to start at 1:00 and 2:00 o'clock, or 2:00 and 3:00 o'clock, and so, and travel for the holiday. So, but we don't, you know, we don't, when it comes to those opportunities, we get information from them as to what they're interested in, and then we discuss. So they came up with Christmas Eve and the personal day and President's Day. So that's why, and we took that as part of the package, I guess, of benefits to the sitting commission, which was approved.
And Amy, in the packet, you compiled some of the budgetary material. Can you walk us through that as well?
Yes, I can. And it's not perfect math, because of course, you know, somebody that's been, for example, on the police force for 20 years is at a higher wage rate than maybe some of our newer employees, so it's not perfect math. And we don't know what's going to happen on a holiday. We've had New Year's Day where we end up calling in all our officers, and that changes things. But just in general, a typical non-holiday payroll is approximately between $34,200 to $34,700. So that's every day, we're, that's what, we're spending to pay the benefits now. That's payroll. I don't believe that includes benefits. Is that correct? So that doesn't include, you know, the expense of benefits and taxes and FICA and all that good stuff that you have been very generous with city employees with. So that's just wages. Additional holiday pay or holiday overtime pay has been as low as 5,700 roughly and as high as 70, no, as high as 8,400. So it depends upon who's working, what's going on. Changes if there's snow, you know, changes about who is exactly working. But that's, you know, roughly what we're looking at. So there is an expense to holidays in addition, because we do have to have some folks that work, no matter what, because that's what, that's what we do. We don't, we don't ever not have somebody at the city. So happy to talk about that as well, if folks would like to. The departments do have overtime budgets. Three more holidays. Maybe we may have to scale back somewhere else or rebudget or something like that, but...
So Amy, just to clarify again, because as I'm looking at this scale, nobody else in the state has as many personal days as Yankton. Some have, quite a few have zero to none, or maybe one or two. We're the only one that has three. So just so, again, I understand this correctly, that is negotiated. So the union itself has selected to have a personal day instead of these three holidays. They basically have said, we want to pick that day. Now, if it's important to them, they can take the actual day off, or they can use it really anytime else during the year, or is it restricted?
It's not restricted. So it works like a vacation day, an employee would put in a request to a supervisor. They can request, you know, a holiday we don't observe off. Some might do that if their spouse has it off, or, you know, that holiday is important to them for another reason. That does happen. They have, correct, requested that. One time, they requested a personal day, one time they requested the President's Day, and one time they, the unions requested the Christmas Eve holiday. So that's where we got today. But of course, there are a number of non-represented employees. Those employees did not have a stake in saying, you know, what holidays or what they receive. But everybody's happy to have a day off, of course. I don't want you to think that, that we're not. Also, you know, it should be known that we feel that, I think I can speak for a lot of the employees when I say that, you know, the city's been generous to us in terms of all of our benefits. So, you know, this is, we just want that to be known, that they're gracious and appreciate what we have, no matter what that is.
The personal leave days, how do those, are those based on seniority?
No.
Is that how that works?
No. Everybody gets, oh, how it's decided?
How it's decided who gets that day off?
Well, all vacation would be based that way if it's tight. But we always try, all the department heads, I think it's fair to say, try to accommodate all the requests. Now, you know, when we have limited staff, sometimes we need to work that out with the employees, and then it would be likely seniority-based. But most of the times with the personal days, you know, I want to take a long weekend here, and then, you know, two weeks later, Lisa wants to take. So we can stagger it a little bit, and we haven't ran into conflicts. Now, the personal days, this is something I didn't include in the memo, but the personal days are use them or lose them. So you have to use them by the end of the year. They don't roll over. So you can't bank personal days your whole career, and then after 40 years, take the last, you know, six months off or something. That's not how that works. We do prorate those for when you're hired. So if you're hired in January, you would get all of them. Hired in second quarter, you'd get three of them, et cetera. So that was a change in your bargaining agreement recently, because prior to that, you got four. If you were hired December 20th, you got all four. Three or four, depending upon where Christmas Eve falls, so.
And just to be clear, so the personal leave days, they're not paid as, even though that was negotiated, they're not paid as holidays, they're just straight pay?
Nope, they're straight eight-hour pay. So in effect, you get a day off. You know, those that have 12-hour shifts are getting just the eight hours, so they have to work that through. They might use a personal day and four hours of vacation if they want to take their full shift off. But yeah, that's just a straight pay situation. So in that regard, those are kind of nice from a city standpoint, in that there's not the overtime, because, you know, most people aren't taking the same personal day off. Now, when we had, when we did not have Christmas Eve off, there was a lot of folks that took Christmas Eve, either as a personal day or vacation day. But now we have that off, so we'll have to.
Thank you.
Amy, I would know, and I guess bring this up to you, Brittany, or whatever. I know Commissioner Hanoff was not able to be here tonight, but if I recall, when he brought this up before, he had stated, you know, one of the reasons for that being the significance of the day and what it means. And so one of the things I thought of, depending on the discussion tonight, have we given any thought to if we, whether we move forward with one, two, three, whatever we do here, one of my thoughts was, in essence, part of the reason he was requesting it is to honor that day. Have we thought about any activities we could do for city employees on that day that would still kind of celebrate the significance of that day and still honor, you know, why that day is there, if, depending on what the discussion is tonight? But I do know that was kind of one of the thoughts he had. So, you know, on Indigenous Peoples' Day, we could have somebody come in from the Native American culture and talk about rituals and ceremonies and things like that that they have. Because I do know, you know, our city employees cross over and talk to all different types of citizens in our communities. So maybe even having more of an awareness or something like that might be something that could be offered up as well?
We can do that. We do have, you know, an employee engagement arm of our Human Resources Department now, and they're creative, and they're creative in also finding opportunities. We just had a Vietnam veteran come and speak to city employees last week. We did not do that on Veterans Day. Veterans Day is a holiday for us, so observe Friday. We had him come, and he and Dave Hosmer came and gave a really nice talk and a moment to honor some of the things that happened with that conflict and veterans. And of course, we have the city Christmas party, which is a different day, celebrated a different day. We certainly can do those things. And perhaps, you know, annually, we could take a look at a different holiday, because we do have a whole mix of holidays, if that's important. We also have connecting cultures in our community now active. And I have a meeting scheduled with Sarah Brandt, and one of the things I wanted to visit with her about is kind of, you know, what opportunities for programming for, they may, they may offer. Now, I don't know, you know, if they would offer something associated with these holidays, but we currently do have some training that includes diversity information, but I think they might be able to help us more localized and with the populations that we're seeing and newcomers we're seeing in Yankton. So that's an opportunity as well. I think she may have some ideas and things that we have not even considered, because we don't, we don't have all holidays that represent, you know, of course, all the populations that we have here, so.
Amy, I think that's a great idea. And I'm sure connecting cultures, if they don't have someone that can help, I'm sure they can point us in the direction of somebody that would be able to.
Yeah. And we have other resources here too, you know, at the MEAT and other things, that opportunities, so.
One of my concerns is with the budget already set, then asking departments to carve out extra overtime pay, and I don't want to make any assumptions, which departments would feel that the most? Where do we have the most overtime?
I think that that probably would make Chief Foot squirm a little bit in his budget, because he asked me directly, where's that money come from? I said, that comes from your budget. And, you know, dispatch would obviously have overtime. Part of it too depends upon what else happens throughout the year. Most years, we're pretty tight on our overtime. Adam will get heartburn if it snows on a holiday. But I don't want to give the impression that you can't make it happen, you know, you supplement other places. I think there's, you know, of course, not having a vote, you have to be able to balance, you know, what you're spending and, you know, what work is not being completed when we're not there. But yeah, you know, it isn't going to break the city to do one or three or 10 more holidays. We can figure out a way to do that, but it's what you guys feel comfortable with and what you think is best. And then going forward into the new contract, what's negotiated? Because that's legally what we're bound to, and Ross keeps saying that, because otherwise Ross, Ross will jump in. So we do eventually have to negotiate this with our labor unions.
Yeah, great point on that, Commissioner Minor. I think that's the hard part here, is the timing of it, because we've already done the negotiation with the union, we've already set the 2024 budget, you know, so it would have, obviously, timing-wise would have been better had all of this been discussed before all of that was set. So thank you for pointing that out. Other questions or...
I guess, in thinking about this and trying to balance everything out, you know, I appreciate Commissioner Hanoff bringing up this issue, because, you know, I think we all want to honor these holidays, they're all very important and have significance. And I hate it if people look that we don't give those days off and think we don't care about those holidays, because that's certainly not the case. But as has been talked about tonight, this is part of a collective bargaining issue. It's part of a budgetary issue. So I guess I would like to see us ask the city manager to give Indigenous Peoples' Day off the next two years, and then in the next round of contract negotiations, you know, figure out where we go from there. That'll, the future commission will have to decide what they have an appetite for. But in thinking about, you know, we're already at the top end of holidays when you compare us to other cities. Sturgis is the only one that has a day more than us, and at 13, we're already above probably about half of the other cities we surveyed. And then just thinking about the taxpayers and adding three holidays overnight, it's about between $6,000 and $8,000 in overtime for every holiday. And then, you know, depending on how you look at the $34,000 or so dollars in normal pay that we would just have in payroll to keep things going, that, you know, we're paying that, but there's no work getting done on those days. So I think just trying to look at the big picture, balance everything out, that's where I'm at. So I guess I would make a motion that we have the city manager observe Indigenous Peoples' Day the next two years, and then the next collective bargaining unit discussions, figure out where to go from there.
I would second that. I like that idea in that that gives us some time, right, with the collective bargaining unit, and it would also give us a chance to get into another budget year and have that discussion as part of the budget, which are the two components. And again, I think it's a valid discussion. I think it's important to honor those days. I don't think any of us disagree with that. It's the timing of it, and then weighing a budget that has been set and negotiations that have been completed. Those all fit into the picture. Ross, legalese wise, considering budget's been approved, bigger issue here is the union, and we've already negotiated with them. Does this sit okay as a proposed motion tonight with everything legally that we have to take into account?
Mostly, with one point of clarification that is, that's meaningful. So with the, we have two unions, right? So we have the regular employees' union, and then the Fraternal Order of Police for the police union. The way labor negotiation is supposed to work is all good, all bad, anything relating to hours, wages, everything needs to be negotiated through the union, including the good. So historically, every time we wanted to give something nice to the employees just for doing a good job and keeping us a competitive place to work, it would require a memorandum of understanding that we have to go through with the union. So, you know, think of it, unions trying to encourage participation. They can say, look what we helped get you, so they're part of the process. And doing that enough times, with our AFSMI employee union, we negotiated an express term that says the city manager can give without getting permission to make that process easier. And with that union, it's, the action of this body and the actions of Amy carrying it out is good enough to make that happen. However, with the FOP, that is not in the collective bargaining agreement, at least not yet. So that, even though you can mandate that, technically, it can't be so without getting a memorandum of understanding. However, I do not anticipate that the union is going to come back with a no, because anything good for their body is going to be approved. But that is a technicality that we can't be ignorant of. So essentially, at least as it relates to the FOP, you'd be directing the city manager to circulate that letter of understanding, authorizing the holiday for... to circulate that letter of understanding, authorizing the holiday for the next couple of years, at least until the Fraternal Order of Police agrees that we can just, you know, give the police nice things without having to ask for permission. So sorry for the hyper-technical point there.
No, I appreciate that because what I don't want to do is, I want to make sure if we have a motion and a second, that it works within what we have the right to do. So I wanted to clarify that. Commissioner Villanueva?
Yeah, I would like to amend that motion. This is why, Commissioner Johnson, I agree with everything that you're saying. But I also think that all three of those holidays are important. And I would like to honor all three of those holidays by allowing the employees to use, to make it a flex day or their own personal day as opposed to this is the holiday that you have to take off. And this is why, because I think it, by doing that, it makes it easier for us to, as a city, run and be a little more cognizant of what it costs us to do that. But then it also, by doing that, I'm saying we honor all three days because they're all equally important. But then it gives us, gives the employees a flexibility to take the day off they want and cost us less money in the process.
So to point a clarification here, Commissioner Villanueva, you're actually recommending they get three additional personal days, not these holidays.
No, I'm not. I'm recommending instead of having one holiday, that is Indigenous Peoples' Day, instead of that one day, we make it a, an employee-chosen flex day. I don't know if that's the correct terminology.
So you're still proposing one day?
One day.
They just pick if they want Indigenous, Juneteenth or MLK?
No, any day, any day. And this is why, because again, by not picking that, by honoring all the holidays and giving them the option to pick any day they want off that works for them, it costs us less money as a city. It does less interruption of services because then not everybody would be off and it costs a taxpayer less money. And the employee still wins by getting one day off of their choosing. And we still honor, we're going to honor all three of those days by giving them whichever day they want off during the year. So the extra, again, flex day, I don't know what the?
Personal, an extra personal day.
An extra, one extra personal day.
You want them to have four personal days a year?
Correct, instead of three.
And that would be, I have to look at the calendar, but when the Christmas holiday then falls on the weekend, then it would be five. So just, excuse me, for my clarification, you're saying an additional personal day for those two years and then renegotiating?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Instead of just picking one day, again, which is important.
I got you. I got you.
Yep.
Is there a second to the amendment?
I would second the amendment. I just didn't know if Ross was adding something.
I'm sorry, guys, we're jumping down the rabbit hole. With the personal leave, I believe we negotiated that for new hires in a given year, depending upon when in the year you get hired.
Yeah, that's true, Ross.
It affects how many days you get.
That's true, but they would get one more.
Okay. So does it go to everybody regardless of which day of the year you're hired or where, what point in the year do you get hired that you get that extra day?
In '24, '25, I understand the motion to be, you get one and then you get your prorated based on the time of year you're hired.
Correct. So it's just one extra day, no matter when you're hired during the year, just to keep it clean?
Correct.
Sorry. Just thinking about practical application.
Right. And the reason I bring this up is, to me, it seems like it's a win-win, win for the employee and it's better for the city and the taxpayers that we're not one interrupting service on one day, which again is important. But then also then it gives the employee flexibility to pick the day off that is going to be best for them and honoring all three.
And administratively, since it's a personal holiday though, it would still be a use-or-lose scenario, so we're not banking.
Correct, correct. And that's why I asked about how do they, how do they take those days? Because if they're not, I won't say guaranteed, but if they're not going to be able to use it, then there's no point.
Well, they've got to do a little planning, but we've never not been able to accommodate somebody to get all their personal days. And it's just hard. We start reminding them in July and August, like it's a use-or-lose scenario because it can get tight towards the end of the year, but we've been able to accommodate.
Okay.
Any other commission discussion thoughts?
Brittany, do you mind coming to the podium? I just want to ask if, from an HR director perspective, how, what's this going to do?
Yeah.
You know, if it's adding an additional personal day is what the current motion is, is that going to be an administrative nightmare for you or is it just, it's pretty simple?
No, personal days are, like Amy said, no different than vacation days. So they're actually, on my side administratively, they're way easier than a holiday. You don't have to worry about holiday overtime. You're not figuring out which departments make that part of their schedule. You know, for example, the police department now is going to work 88 hours. Everybody's going to have 88 hours because they don't include the holiday as actual hours worked for their pay period. Same thing with dispatch. Other departments, parks, street, those eight hours are included in their 80-hour pay period. So holidays make it more complicated where a personal day is extremely easy, just like a vacation day.
From a service standpoint, we're also then able to, one tough thing with a holiday is you can have a water problem in your home on a holiday, garbage, you know, that's why I'm always talking about, what's the garbage schedule? I mean, I don't just get a kick out of it. It's confusing. If you're on a Monday route like me too, I just put mine out no matter what on Monday. But it can be confusing as well. So personal days, because we don't have a block of people, we can still provide the services as well. So from that standpoint, that's actually easier.
And I just want to add one last thing too. I don't think it's a bad thing that we're going to be at 14 days off with Sturgis. Again, I know that those are holidays and I know we're adding the extra personal day. But I've said this before, I mean, giving our employees, making, giving them another reason to stay here or to have employees come here and work here, live here, play here, I think that's important too. And happy employees make for a happy community and a good customer service. So I think it's a good thing.
I don't know if I agree with the personal day, mainly because the whole thing that brought this up was the honoring of the days. It wasn't, it was not, oh, we need to give more time off or more personal days. When Commissioner Hanoff was bringing that up, it was to honor Native American Day. And that was what he had asked for to begin with, if my recollection was right, was to ask for that day. And then he also then brought up Martin Luther King Day and Juneteenth. I guess I'd be in favor of honoring the Native American Day and having that day as a day off in, you know, for the honoring of that day. I don't necessarily know that, I understand the sentiment of honoring the three holidays with a personal day. I just, my own personal viewpoint is that you should probably do it on Native American Day and give that day off and then move forward. And with negotiations, we can talk about the other days, but trying to honor that day specifically on the day.
And I don't, I see your point of view, Commissioner Brunick. But my only retort to that would be, I would much rather see the employees, one, it's going to be easier for us to manage, two, it's going to cause less interruption of service, three, it's going to be better for the taxpayers, four, also, I would see it be more beneficial and more meaningful if we're going to take a day off, honor all three, and if that's specifically the day that you want to honor, that have a Native American speaker come in and speak to us about their traditions, cultures, whatever that looks like. But I think that information, that presentation would be more meaningful than just saying we have a day off, in my opinion.
I like the current motion just because it allows the employees to decide which ones they want to honor.
You mean the amendment? Sorry. I just want to make sure we're getting words right.
Yeah, the amendment.
Yeah, I'm struggling too because I'm kind of where Ben's at. It's like, we want to, I feel like we want to, I want to observe a specific day and yet all your points are very valid, Commissioner Villanueva. So I'm just, I'm struggling with this one.
I think it's hard to, and I get what you guys are saying, I think it's hard to pick one, one day, without offending, potentially offending people. Whereas the amendment that Commissioner Villanueva mentioned allows you to, if you so choose to honor a day that you want versus the city telling you, this is the day we're choosing. I think it gives flexibility and administratively, it's less challenging for our city budgets and HR.
And I guess one thing I've heard anecdotally from employees is that there are constituents who appreciate that we're open on some of these holidays because they have the day off. It allows them to come in and take care of business with the city. So there is that aspect away too. Lots of ways to look at this.
Dwayne?
So one thing also to consider, and I went through dispatch and figured out what the hourly cost for overtime is and some of the feedback that I get is, and this is the same way for police and any of our other employees that are shift workers, there's probably for the city that may have to work on that holiday.
Other comments from the commission? Thoughts? How about the public? All right. Seeing no other questions from the commission and nobody in the public wishing to address the commission on this, we do have an amendment in front of you that gets voted on first and that is to, a personal day in 2024 and 2025 and then negotiate from that point on is correct, right, Commissioner Villanueva? Voting because that doesn't work, so I'm abstaining. But it does look like the amendment passes five to one. And now we have to vote the motion?
Seems silly, right?
It seems silly because if we vote aye, then that also gives them Indigenous.
You are amending the motion that this board is going to consider. So it's possible to vote yea to?
I'm sorry for the public listening at home. We have just voted to amend the motion on the floor. So now that the motion has been amended, you guys are voting to, whether or not to pass the motion.
Ah.
Does that make sense?
Yes. So we're still voting to now officially give them one personal day in 2024 and 2025.
Correct. That's now the amendment before the board.
Yes, thank you for clarifying that. Always gets confusing. All right, roll call.
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Miner?
Aye.
Shrom?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Abstaining. But with that, motion carries five, one. All right. There is no other business in front of the city commission tonight. So with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the regular meeting of November 13, 2023. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Anybody abstaining? We are adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.